States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we call this meeting to order. And I would like to have a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from the twenty eighth of March.
I'll move.
Mark, second by Rebecca. Any comments, questions, changes? Hearing none. All in favor of accepting the minutes say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. Um, now I would like a motion to open, uh, the public hearing for the proposed budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Rebecca, second.
I'll move.
Okay, and Cindy?
Cindy.
All right. So, uh, before we open it up for public questions, there are copies of the budget available. There have been, uh, two public workshops in which the budget was discussed on March ninth and the sixteenth. A few opening statements across all funds. Okay, so across all funds, all personnel services have been given a COLA increase, that's cost of living, increase of five point nine percent inclusive of all employees and elected and appointed officials. An additional ten percent has been added to all estimates for gas, diesel, fuel oil, propane, electricity, phone, and internet, given our rising prices. All expenditures were tightened up across all funds based on historical spending and current pricing. And the expenditures associated with the second phase of the security camera installation were divided across all three departments. So some highlights for Fund A, so that's the general fund. After extensive evaluation of the expenditures by myself, the clerk treasurer, DPW supervisor, and the board workshops, I am very pleased to inform the public that we were able to balance all the revenues and the expenditures. We are appropriating eight thousand dollars from the equipment reserve fund, which will be discussed a bit later. The general fund expenditures were increased by twelve point eight three percent for a total of eighteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. And the overall increase to the property taxes is at the tax cap of one point zero two percent for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget year. So some of the highlights are, we have increased our law expenses from seventy-one hundred to nine thousand dollars. Website administration and development has actually moved from the third code contractual to the village hall contractual code so that they're all expended together with the rest of the computer and software items for ease and transparency. The line was increased for two purposes, one, the uploading and accessibility of local laws for the public. And the fire department minutes are being uploaded to the, uh, website, uh, monthly. So these minutes are being added to remain in compliance with New York State open meeting laws. The village hall equipment code increased by twenty-six eighty-five for the second phase of the security camera, so that's their portion of it. Central printing and mailing with those costs, that's been increased by eight hundred dollars to accommodate for inflation and the increased number of printing and mailings. As you may recall, uh, we are sending out a number of, uh, number of additional mailings. The contingent fund was decreased by fifty percent with the knowledge that in an emergency, fund balance can be appropriated, but we hope that's not the case this year. Um, the fire department contractual code increased by a whopping fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of the UTV trailer and associated equipment. But this has been fully funded by a SAM grant, which is a state and municipal facilities grant. We have to expend the money first and then SAM grant passes, uh, pays us back. The building code contractual increased from four thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars to eleven thousand, forty-three dollars for the one-time expense of converting all of our building and zoning laws to digital web files through the general code. Those had not been updated for well over a decade, so now those are being updated and, uh, available to the public. I'm very pleased to say that we are decreasing the budget for street lighting by two thousand dollars this year after already seeing a decrease in street lighting costs after switching over to LED lights. In fact, there's been a decrease in electrical costs across all buildings where we have installed LED lights. The exception is the fire department electric bill due to the electrical needs for the equipment. And we've adjusted this budget line due to inflation. There is, uh, under snow removal contract code, this was increased from eighty-eight hundred to fourteen thousand, two hundred to purchase a sander for one of the smaller trucks to make it more accessible during our winter icy months. Parks and playgrounds increased from nineteen hundred to eight thousand for the purchase of an ATV to aid in the preparation and maintenance of the cross-country ski trails. Eight thousand of that will come out of the equipment reserve fund for DPW. We hope to be able to use that, um, with increasing trails during the, uh, summer, spring, summer, and fall months as well. So that, that is waiting on the DEC, uh, management. Parks and playgrounds contractual-
Recording in progress.
Parks and playgrounds contractual code decreased slightly due to projects and repairs completed for the parks and the restrooms. Uh, refuse and collection equipment code decreased by thirty thousand, ninety dollars due to the final payment on the garbage truck. So that was paid during this last budget cycle, so yay. Um, did you go up here with damage here? Um, then we have street cleaning equipment code, that's been increased from two thousand to five thousand for the repair and maintenance of the backhoe. The retirement workers comp and social security codes were decreased to reflect projected expenditures more closely and or estimated invoices that we've received. And finally, the medical insurance was proactively increased from eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars to ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars in anticipation of potential increases next year. Are there any questions? I'll pause at this point for General Fund A. Any comments, questions? Okay, water and sewer will go much quicker. There are no additional increases to rates anticipated for this year. And all one-time purchases were removed from the budget from last year. So with the water fund, the department is seeing an overall decrease of one point nine three percent from last year's budget. Thank you, Ed. Um, purification equipment code was completely eliminated, uh, one thousand, five hundred dollars there. And the transmission and distribution equipment code was decreased by four thousand or twenty percent due to updates made to the system over the last two years. Again, retirement and workers comp were decreased. The water bond interest, we are coming near the end of that life. And so those costs for interest have decreased by five thousand dollars a year, which is great. We have anticipated expenditures for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget of less, uh, five thousand dollars less than the expected revenue, so we'll have a, uh, an upside of fifty-one ninety. At the appropriate time, the funds will be allocated to the capital reserve fund for the water department to help plan for future capital projects. Not reflected in the budget are the updates to the water system that comprise the WIA grant submission for the village that we put in a couple months ago. We're still waiting to hear that outcome. These are needed and wanted updates to the system that can be completed later if we don't get the WIA grant altogether. And the capital project reserve monies may be used against those projects. Sewer fund, the current proposed budget has estimated revenues of eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars over estimated expenditures. And again, the modifications that I just went through to this in the water fund are reflected in the sewer fund because in many cases, water and sewer split those expenditures. And as with the water fund, all overages will be allocated to the capital reserve fund to help plan for future projects. So does anyone have any comments, questions? Again, I say congratulations to the, um, to the staff, to Crystal and to the board for, uh, having a balanced budget this year. I think that's really, uh, phenomenal. So, uh, hearing, no further comments on that. If I can have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Okay, Mark second, Jim Rumsey. All right, public hearing is closed. Now we go on to organizational items. So newly elected trustees are Cindy Rumsey and Rebecca Smith, so welcome back, uh, to the board. Appointments by the mayor is Mark Doniker, uh, who has agreed to serve as deputy mayor for another, uh, term. Thank you. Appointments made by the mayor with board approval. Um, there are some terms that are ongoing. Those are for the clerk treasurer, the deputy clerk treasurer, the superintendent of public works. Their terms end twenty twenty-three. Uh, we've appointed fire and building code enforcement officer Rick Rumsey, land use enforcement officer Rick Rumsey. For the planning board, uh, we are reappointing, I would like to propose the reappointment of John Foley. His term is up. The other members of the planning board are Matt O'Brien, who expires in twenty-four, Art Stokes, who expires in twenty twenty-five, Charlie Asher, who expires in twenty twenty-three, and Susan Hartman, whose term expires in twenty twenty-six. Zoning Board of Appeals, I, uh, just found out today that Rosemary Tracy, whose term expires, uh, today, or, uh, I'm sorry, in this cycle, um, she does not want to be reappointed. So we do have an opening for Zoning Board of Appeals. Presently, we have, uh, Dick Tesser, whose term expires next year, and Mark Crary, whose term expires in twenty twenty-four. So if the board or the public knows of anyone who would be willing to serve in that capacity, uh, please let me know and we will, um, evaluate their, their, um, proposal. The registrar of statistics and the deputy registrar of statistics, uh, their term expires in twenty twenty-four. Um, we're going to, to wait for a motion at the very end for all of this. Uh, the committees, I would like to, uh, continue the committees that we've had because I think they've been very successful. So sewer and water, Mark Doniker and Jim Rumsey, streets and highways, Mark Doniker and Rebecca Smith, parks and playgrounds, Jim Rumsey and Rebecca Smith, finance and office, Jeanette Barrett and Cindy Rumsey, and fire commissioner Cindy Rumsey. Are there any comments, changes? People are still happy with those committees? Okay? And our designations are the official newspaper of the Hamilton County Express and any other to be designated as needed. We will continue to set the regular meeting night, time, and place as the second and fourth Monday of each month, unless the dates fall on a holiday where the meeting shall be held on the following day and shall commence at seven PM at the Village Hall located at twenty-eight seventy-five State Route Eight, Speculator, New York. And, uh, the other designation is to adopt the rules of procedure for meetings. And I wanted to know if anybody had any comments, questions, corrections for the rules of procedure?
No.
Nope. Hearing none, those will be accepted. Um, so the res- the resolutions are to authorize payments prior to the audit of claims for public utilities, uh, utility services, postage, and freight charges as provided by New York State Village Law. Um, the clerk treasurer and mayor or deputy mayor shall be authorized to issue checks on all funds, so dual, dual signatures required. And that the mayor and the clerk shall be authorized to enter any safe deposit held, uh, safe deposit box held in the name of the village. And that MBT Bank shall be designated as the official bank and depository of the village of Speculator. Number three, adopt the listing of water and sewer customers as the basis for computing fees for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Uh, the fourth is to attend conferences and schools. So whereas there is to be held during the coming year, A, New York State Conference of Mayors meeting in May, legislative meeting in February, and the training school for municipal clerks and finance officers conducted by NICOM. And whereas it is determined by the Board of Trustees that attendance by certain municipal officials and employees at one or more of these meetings or conferences benefits the community, now therefore be it resolved that the following officers are hereby authorized to attend the following conferences and schools. The mayor or her designee would attend the annual meeting of NICOM held in May or June or the legislative meeting held in February. And the clerk treasurers and attend the annual fall training school sponsored by NICOM and New York State Office of the State Comptroller. All expenses and incidentals to the conferences will be paid by the village of Speculator, including mileage, room, board, and registration fees. And fifth, provide a mileage reimbursement in lieu of auditing and allowing a claim for actual and necessary expenses for personal automobile travel for official duties. So whereas the Board of Trustees has determined to pay a fixed rate for mileage as reimbursement to officers and employees of the village who use their personal automobiles while performing their official duties on behalf of the village, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees shall approve reimbursement to such officers and employees at the twenty-twenty-two federal IRS rate, which has gone up to fifty-eight point five cents per mile. And actually, the sixth thing is to approve the procurement policy. So a copy of the procurement policy was distributed with the board minutes. It was last updated on May twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen. Does anyone have any comments, corrections, changes to the procurement policy?
No.
Okay, hearing none. So the last bit before I have a motion to accept the, uh, organizational items, appointments, and designations is to set the next organizational meeting for April eleventh at seven PM at the Village Hall located at twenty-eight seventy-five State Route Eight, Speculator, New York. Oops.
Says April tenth, twenty-three.
You're right. It is April tenth, not on Tu- don't come a year from now on Tuesday. So April tenth, yes. So may I have a motion to, um, approve the organizational items, appointments, designations, and resolution?
So moved.
Okay, send, um, Rebecca and Mark. Any comments, questions, corrections?
No.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll do that again next year. Okay, Ed, batter up. Ed?
Okay, I, sorry, there's no video. I can't put him down or he'll just cry.
Okay.
All right, I'll start with our monthly report. Um, and then I'll move on to the other things that are on the list.
Yes.
Um, still waiting on the transfer switch for the well building. Once I know more, I will let you know. He was waiting on size specs to see if it would actually fit within the cabinet that we have um, at this point. The service that I had mentioned on Timberline Drive, the last meeting, has been repaired and fixed. Uh, we did it live. I actually showed a video to Mark and, um, that's been replaced, the service and all that, so it should be good. We will be cleaning that area up as it dries out. I have on here the five-year plan with some changes, but I decided not to get into that too much tonight because there was a lot on the, lot on the list.
Okay.
Uh, normal, normal expenditures, we're still awaiting awards for the, for the water grant. I looked into it today a little bit and they still have not been announced. I called Brendan, we discussed it a little. As soon as we know, we'll, we'll let you guys know. Um, and then JR has completed his schooling for his water license and he will be, he's scheduled for an in-house exam. It's not, they just come and questioned him, um, about our system to make sure he knows about it. And then that's scheduled for the nineteenth of April. There is a form that I need, uh, the mayor to sign, or I think Crystal could probably sign it as well just stating that he's been working for the village and the water department.
Okay, I'll be around this week.
Then he has, yeah, and then he has his application to fill out as well. But I've already sent in his, I've already sent in his, um, high school diploma and his certificate for his course and Cris- Crystal has a copy of that as well.
Okay, um, Ed, if he is going to be tested on the nineteenth, Crystal is out of the office and I'll be in the office tomorrow only. So if you can get me down-
No, that's, that's, that's okay. That's just, she's gonna come and do our, um, our, our annual inspection and she's just gonna give him his quick little thing on that day.
Okay.
That has nothing to do with you guys, so that'll be all right.
So the next day, he should get his dollar an hour.
Yes, well, as soon as I receive his license.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, Crystal's already been, Crystal's already been informed and his COLA raise has been accounted for with that dollar raise, so, um, that's all set. All right, as for the wastewater department, my finished, uh, water withdrawal report, that was completed and submitted. Once again, the five-year plan, we'll discuss a little bit later. Um, pump station two, once again, had rags bound up in it. We pulled that pump in, removed those, put it back in service. We haven't had any issues since. Uh, the recent rain event that called for an inch and a half of rain, and I think we got like three,
Yeah.
Uh, put the plant under some stress. We enacted our weather plan. Took about forty-eight hours before we could put everything back to normal. Um, but at this time, things have subsided and we're back to normal operation.
Okay.
Um, the upgrade, the upgrade project's kind of on hold. I don't really know what's going on. Um, I asked for some answers today. I haven't received any as of yet. Um, hopefully, we can get everything finished sooner rather than later.
Okay.
And then the FEMA project has been approved, which we all knew, and then I'll discuss that in a, in a minute.
Yep.
All right, the next thing I wanna move on to-
I'm sorry, Ed-
Yes, unless you guys have any questions.
Yeah, well, the grease trap letter has been sent out to all businesses according to the local law, right?
Yeah, I was gonna get to that, based on your agenda, but-
Okay, sorry about that. And then when the road is fixed, when the road is fixed on Timberline, uh, are we waiting on the state to fix the road across from the village hall where that, where that water issue was?
Um, that was the plan, but we had some concern. Um, we had a call this weekend in regards to that. We had a call in regards to that this weekend, so we may try to fix that, uh, with some cold patch for the time being.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, we'll go back to the grease trap thing. I had a, I got questioned today in regards to the letter that was sent out.
Yes.
Uh, within the letter, it said that there was gonna be an attached form for the information that we were requesting.
Uh-huh.
Um, we didn't attach that form. I neglected to and missed it. It was an oversight on my part. Um, just so everybody knows, basically, all that were, if you already have a grease trap, I wanna see anything that states that it's been cleaned in recent, within the last year. So it invoiced, Camp of the Woods actually provided those to us already. Um, that's where I'm at with that. If, and I might try to make a form up, it'll be at the office, or I'll hand them out, um, by hand.
Okay.
So I apologize for that. That was an oversight on my part.
No worries. It's readily fixed.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm a little. Okay, so, the next thing I wanna discuss, um, actually, 'cause I kinda just left off on this, the Lamont engineers, the bid preparation for pump station two.
Yes.
We, um, we actually already did have a vote to have the mayor sign this, but she wanted to make sure you all saw this prior to signing it. So as long as it's okay, um, yeah, I'll let you do the motion or whatever for that.
Okay. So this is, this is to, um, allow Lamont to, uh, put together the, uh, bid proposal and send out for bids to, uh, repair pump station two, to replace, uh, pump station two. This is being funded by FEMA, New York State Dishes, and then we pay twelve and a half, uh, percent of that. So, uh, we finally have a, um, proposal letter in hand. Uh, those services and fees are estimated at, the design and drawings are estimated to be forty-five hundred dollars. The project manual, um, to include with the project documents and the contract and construction specs is four thousand. The bidding assistance that Lamont would provide is thirty-five hundred. The administration of the construction would be estimated at seventy-five hundred. And the pre-design is estimated at five thousand. Um, and so those are made within the scope of services that the village provides the, you know, standard, uh, uh, existing, uh, pump station information, uh, the existing pump station drawings, the pumps and control information, writing diagram, wiring diagrams, and site property boundaries rights away and easement. So it's pretty, pretty straightforward. It's very comparable to what we've done before, but I would like a motion, um, to sign the, the pump station, uh, letter of agreement to, uh, have them provide engineering services for the, uh, the bid process.
So moved.
I have to add it all up. Sorry. Uh, I think, I think we said that it came to, what, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twenty thou- like twenty-five thousand about, and that's all covered under FEMA. It's all covered under that. So, um, Mark Doniker, uh, makes the motion second. Oh, right, which Rumsey? Jim?
Me.
Oh, Cindy, Cindy Rumsey.
She's finance.
All right, she is finance, yes.
I was, I was on mute. I didn't realize it.
All right, so all in favor of, of approving, allowing me to sign this, uh, proposal, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. That will be signed and sent back, uh, to them tomorrow. All right, Ed, I and I, my favorite.
Yes, so we've had a lot of discussion about I and I over the last month or so between Jeanette and I and determining the best way to go about using our ARPA funds. Um, we did come to the conclusion that this was the best way because it had, is something that we've, I've been discussing and been wanting to do for the last, well, since I started working here, really. Um, and now that we have funds available, I think now's a better time to do it than any other, so. Uh, this all started, well, you guys saw the letter that I sent you. I didn't wanna have to go through all of that at the board meeting. Um, but overall, we've came, I've come to the conclusion, based on some information from engineers and whatnot, that we should hire a company to come in and CCTV our system. And in the, during that time, we will finish manhole inspections ourselves to save some money. Um, we have received a couple proposals for the engineers to, to do all this for us, but because we kinda started already, it doesn't make sense to, um, start over, I guess. Um, and also, the proposals, as I've been going through this process, things have changed over the last month. So one proposal is from Lamont, and I believe that only really included smoke testing.
Yes.
Um, plus the report. And then the other proposal, which we received today from CT Mail, um, only included basically the lake line and surrounding areas to be camouflaged and smoke tested and reported on, manhole inspections and all that, so on and so forth. And I think that cost came to, just for that section along the lake line, if you look at that report, it came to, um, I do have it here, let me see.
Yeah, I'm trying to grab it myself.
I have it right here.
Yeah, so if you do all of the, the task, the total estimate-
Yeah, it was, uh-
maximum is forty-nine thousand, one hundred.
Right, so-
Break some of that out.
If we, yeah, and then as for Lamont's, Lamont's, this would include reporting both of these. Uh, Lamont's was to do everything, and that one came to, well, they just gave us hourly rates, I believe.
Yep.
Uh, lump sum of twenty-five thousand, five hundred, but that was just for smoke testing.
Right. So, may I make a proposal? So you- So you have certainly gone above and beyond the, um, the call to provide for, uh, three, four. Four, uh, bids from American Underground Services, Arnold Construction Company, Lamont Engineers. And CT Mail Associates. So what I would like to propose is that those who sit on the Water and Sewer Committee. Meet with Ed and, and see if we can select, propose a selection of one of these four. Because as Ed said, there, some have some of one, some have some of another. Um, but if a proposal can be brought by the next meeting, and we'll move forward with that. Does that sound reasonable to the board?
Fine with me. I, I need to go through everything. I haven't had a chance to go through all the documents.
Yes, and CT Mail only came through, uh, late this afternoon, so, um, yeah, so none of us have really had, uh, appropriate time to go through it. So as soon as that committee can meet and make a recommendation, the rest of us will review it more closely. And if we need to, Ed, we can call a special meeting and get that approved sooner, so you can get working on that faster.
Yeah, and I think what everybody, I think what everybody will notice once they review everything is that.
So.
The cost associated with hiring the engineer to do everything, you, you pay a premium, you know?
Yep.
Um, so if we were to hire ourselves, and Brendan agrees with this as well, once we've, once we've done all that. Got the CCTV footage, inspected all our manholes, we provide all that information to an engineer. They may suggest that we do some flow testing, which shouldn't be too costly. Um, we don't, we just don't have the equipment to do so, and then we would move forward in that way. But once, once we get everything together, I'll sit down with Mark and we'll, um, we'll discuss that, and we'll make a proposal for that next meeting.
Well, Mark and?
Jim.
Jim, yes.
Mark and Jim, yes.
Mark and Jim, okay.
Yeah, I'll review it probably tomorrow or the next day, and then I'll get with Ed and Jim and, um, whenever Jim can get a chance.
Yeah, I apologize, I apologize for all the back and forth with it. It's just I was trying to find the best way to spend the money and. We had a lot of, uh, insight from the engineering firms, including, um.
LaBerge. Yep.
Um, yeah, that was in the letter. Uh, I didn't want anybody to, you know, so we're using all of the information that we're being provided to make the best.
Yep.
Make our best choice.
No, and, and the, I believe I speak for the board when I say thank you for the, the thoroughness and to, to check this all out.
Yes.
Certainly, certainly not a straightforward process, and thank you for Miles', uh, for his patience. Okay, um, and?
Yeah, I apologize for that. If anybody had any questions.
Oh. Yeah, any questions or comments to add? Nope?
Not at this time.
Nope, that's it. Just thank you.
Alright, we'll speak with you soon.
Ed said. Alright, see you. Okay, um, moving on to the perk treasurers report. So Crystal, as you know, is on vacation, much, uh, much deserved, and, uh, Tracy, the deputy perk treasurer, Tracy Marshall.
Okay. Um, just letting you guys know that I hope on an ad that's going to be in the paper from beginning, starting to next week for a couple weeks for our, like, our provisions.
Yes, and there is a free lifeguard, uh. School training available, um, I believe it's through DEC.
Yes, it is.
That's a, that's.
Starts in a couple weeks.
Yep, so if anybody knows anybody who, uh, would like to be a lifeguard and a strong swimmer, please.
Yeah, I would suggest that, um, we, I don't know if the, I guess the course is free, but getting there and back, you might wanna pay for mileage.
Yeah, if we have a good, if we have a good candidate, I think that's certainly something that we can talk about. Um, I will again reach out to Nick Morrow, who's a supervisor of wells. What we had talked about last year. Was that if either of us have a few lifeguards that we can cover, you know, work to cover for one another. Uh, because we have had issues in the past where maybe two lifeguards have been out, or one lifeguard's been out, and you can't have one alone. So, um, you know, perhaps in the, this summer, we can cover that better between the two, uh, the two municipalities. Okay, yep, thanks.
Great. Um, all the locks have been, end up changing. We locked them in the salt, and I cannot get in that door without you. Um, and it's not one of the wonderful.
And you cannot be trapped in between the sets of doors, yes.
Yep.
So, but I will note that Anita Foley did text me on April Fool's morning saying that she had been caught, and I was moved. So, she cannot be caught anymore.
Um, a reminder that offices are on Friday. And the quarterly, quarterly reports for IRS and YS and Timberline have been submitted.
Great.
The summer garbage schedule has been updated, and I was just website. Um, noticed that there's no big garbage day in May, like cleanup day.
Yep.
That's the change, the big change there. Um, I posted one at the post office, and then people can pick them up here if they would like more copies.
So last year, we had added because of COVID. People were cleaning out basements, and so this year, we've taken that away. So there are three bolt pickups instead of four.
Financial report number ten is ready for review, and we need approval for abstract number twenty.
Okay, so any comments or questions for Tracy? Hearing none, may I have a motion to pay abstract number twenty? Rebecca, and second?
Mark.
Mark, thank you. Any comments, questions about the abstract? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries to pay the bills. Um, a quick update, um, old business, uh, COVID update. Uh, we're waiting to hear from Governor Hokel to see whether the emergency, uh, powers continue. Uh, Lord willing, those will be stopped. Uh, FEMA emergency Halloween storm update. As Ed mentioned, we, uh, have all of our projects approved. The two outstanding ones are the replacement of pump station two and the, uh. Pipe water line that goes underneath the river. Uh, FEMA COVID update, nothing to report there. Uh, we still need to fill out, uh, an enormous amount of paperwork to get reimbursement. That is due by June. They do have some classes for us to look at. Um, for those of you who read the paper two weeks ago, the Hamilton County Express ran a very nice article about the fire tower. Since that time, we've had quite a few donations come in, which is very exciting. We are in the process of, uh, finalizing a date to pour the footers. And, uh, get all the rebar and the forms and things like that, trying to coordinate it with a local. Who may be having a cement delivery, so it's a small amount of cement that we need. And if we can tag it on to another delivery into the area, we would, uh, not have to pay, uh, as large delivery fees. So we're trying to do that as reasonably as possible. And, uh, Ryan Marshall is looking to see if we can find anyone who can locate, I mean, who can donate. Um, any of the wood materials required for, uh, creating the forms for the footer. So we're just looking for some raw wood on that. Uh, septic systems and erosion regulations, uh, still on hold. So at this point, I would like to welcome the soon-to-be chief of the Speculator Vol- Volunteer Fire Department, Tim Underwood. If you would, uh, provide the slate of elected officials, and I understand you have a new member application. So, have a seat. Yeah, you can sit at the big kids' table. Soon-to-be Capitaine.
Alright, um, so we voted, um, on our officers, um, so right now, the nominated committee. Um, nominated, the fire department nominated chief, uh, Tim Underwood. Uh, assistant chief would be Mike Tracy. Uh, second assistant chief would be Matt O'Brien. Captain, uh, first captain would be Powell Darlington. Captain number two would be John Doniker. President would be Stan Williams. Treasurer would be Bob Peck. Vice president would be Powell Darlington. Secretary would be Casey Morrison, and safety officer would be Bob Peck.
Great, so does anyone have any comments or questions about that roster? So, all in favor of approving the new slate of officers for the volunteer fire department may have a motion for that.
Mark.
Mark and?
Jim.
Jim, second. Uh, any comments, questions? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations. We look forward to working with you.
Um, and then we got a new member application for, for Virginia Allen.
So that's in the file there? Uh, so I know those on, online, have not seen it, but, go ahead, sorry.
But, um, she has been awesome. Uh, we asked our members when they put in the application to be there the first, uh, Tuesday, Thursday. Ended that application in, and then we asked them to be there for that second Tuesday. She was there every Tuesday. Um, going forward, doing drill with us, um, doing truck checks with us. She's definitely all in, and you can see the excitement in her face if they have these. Um, opportunities to, um, speak with her, um, so. We all talked to her at the department over the last month, and just saw that fire that she brings and some new ideas that she's party thinking through. Um, so we voted on last Tuesday to, um, recommend bringing her in to be a, um, part of the Speculator Volunteer Fire Department. Would be very excited and privileged to have her on the department with us.
Great. Any comments or questions? For a disclosure, uh, Virginia Allen is my niece, uh, who is up from Texas. So I will recuse myself from the voting, but, um, any comments or questions about her enthusiasm and capabilities?
Um, yeah, if Chief recommends her, I have no problem.
Okay, so would you like to make a motion then, Mark?
Make a motion to, uh, hire Virginia.
Okay, and Rebecca, seconds? Uh, I recuse myself, so all in favor, say aye.
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 And all opposed? She's in. It's gonna be one happy young lady. Uh, I'll leave you to tell her that.
Awesome.
Good, thank you, Tim. And congratulations, chief. Yep.
Yay.
Good, thank you. Alright, um, LoSAP update, which would be, uh, the chief as well. Uh, we spoke with, uh, our new providers of LoSAP and the investment, uh, organization. We sat down with, uh, Chief O'Brien and, um, Crystal, and Cindy was part of that, and myself. And what they're going to do is they're going to do, um, a sixty-forty investment, so a moderate strategy. Where, um, forty percent is, uh. Safe, if you will, um, slow growth, and then the others would be, uh, invested accordingly. And, uh, we'll provide you those updates quarterly to, to see how that is progressing. So I'm glad that we're finally shifted over. There were quite a few bumps in the road with that transition, but it's, it's all completed now. Um, I did want to point out that we did receive our fiscal stress score. Um, for those of you, uh, who know about fiscal stress. Uh, there's a fiscal stress, well, I know about stress, but there's, uh, fiscal stress and environmental stress. And so we have no designation under fiscal stress. Our score is still quite reasonable. With environmental stress, we have moved from susceptible to moderate environmental stress. And so for those of you who don't know, I went back and did my homework and, uh, tried to find out what exactly does that mean? So financial indicators are your fiscal score and your designation. And then the environmental indicators are the environmental score. And, uh, the issue with the environmental score, where we have gone from, uh, low risk to moderate risk. Is the fact that, uh, our population is aging, our young people are getting less, and the cost of our houses are going up. So some of it is from the current state of affairs, and some of it is speculator. So I think that as, as I speak with, uh, people who are interested in coming here with businesses and, and things like that, we certainly welcome them. On the part that they can, uh, provide jobs, and certainly hoping for jobs that, that pay. That can afford families and young families. Our biggest need right now is affordable housing. Um, there are some people who are interested in pursuing that further. And especially, uh, as other towns in the Adirondacks providing at least temporary housing. For those who come for our, uh, holiday season, our, our tourist season. So, uh, there's not too, too much we can do about that, um, but I think that as we try and run. An efficient village and make it more attractive for people to come here, uh, hopefully, one day, we can turn that around. Any questions or comments about fiscal stress? Alright, so, um. And we mentioned the garbage and recyclable collection posted, so, uh, the twice-weekly Monday and Thursday pickup commences on June first. And runs through the end of September. And there was an announcement from county saying that the, um, transfer station will be closed on Saturday, this Saturday. So Friday is a holiday. They're taking Saturday as a holiday, and then Sunday it's closed, so that'll be done. Okay, um, as far as the, any other new business? No, okay. Cruising right along. Roundtable, uh, Lake Champlain. So I sent around to the board, Lake George Regional, uh, Lake Champlain, Lake George Regional Planning. Offering a series of, uh, webinars that I find very helpful. Uh, they've been, uh, instrumental in helping us. You know, get some grants and monitor some grants. So there's a, um, a program overview and benefit of the DWSP two program. I'm not sure what that is. Um, the general funding opportunities, which I've signed up for. There's another overview of the DWSP two program. And that's through, uh, DEC and, uh, Department of Health. Then, uh, there's e-bike regulations, uh, so I believe Rebecca and I have signed up for that. And anybody who would like to, to do that, um, you're welcome to join us. And bring your e-bike, I think. Okay. So, um, second, I am very happy to announce that we are looking at the fiftieth anniversary of the Speculator Seaplane Fly-In. The weekend of June third through the fifth. The seaplane people are very excited to celebrate that, and there's been quite a number of responses coming in. And, um, I have mentioned it to Camp of the Woods because that's actually where it first started. They were flying into the, the camp beach. And then due to liability issues, it's been shifted to, um, our beach. And, um, I am in a meeting tomorrow with the Chamber of Commerce, and hopefully, we'll be able to do something that will welcome. Uh, those seaplanes yet again, cuz it really is quite exciting to see them fly in, and it's really kinda cool. Um, I was asked to make an announcement that the Lake Pleasant Historical Society and the library are hosting. My friend, uh, Lori Rankin, who is a New York State Forest Fire Lookout Association Director. Who will be giving a presentation on fire tower history across the New York and New York State. Um, and she's going to dwell on our local towers that have so much history here. The Pillsbury and Hamilton Towers, as well as the McComas Tower, so that's June fourth, seven PM. She gives a very, very nice talk. Um, and last, like, that's gonna be at the library. Yep, and the last is a heads up. There's nothing, uh, serious for us to do because we're still in discussions. Um, the eighth edition of the quote Mini Takes the States is planning on coming through Speculator on Saturday, July ninth. So Minis are Mini Coopers, and they are predicting quite a few Mini Coopers to come through Speculator on that date. There may be some fundraising opportunities for our local groups such as Twigs, the Fire Department, Ambulance Corps, Historical Society Library. Um, so I'm speaking with them and, and we'll know more, but parking will be, uh, at a premium on the ninth of July. Okay, uh, anybody else for board roundtable? Nothing? Okay, so we'll close, yes?
I said not for me.
Oh, okay, so at this time, um, I will open it for a final public comment. Yes.
Jordy Huckman, Inspector.
Yes.
Uh, I just wondered if the board in the class police reconsidered their. Getting rid of the Golden Parade fire drop. This time here in the village, it was eighty-six years, it was part of the history of the village. It was decommissioned in the nineties, so it was no longer a fire drop, so it wasn't a liability. It actually became part of CPW equipment. It's set in the trail and behind the village garage, it's like. It's set through the trailer, they find the village garage, it's like something, it's poor, and everything. And we got a couple years ago, we would be celebrating the hundredth year, anniversary of the village, and I take the truck. Or if you're part of it, I take the village door. If you get out and out, it's off to some of the locals. They, the father threw up with the truck, their tenders hung up to the truck. And, and basically, the part of this village, which should remain the part of this village.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anything else? Okay, hearing none, we'll bring the public comment to a close. At this time, we do have a, uh, brief discussion under executive session, uh, pertaining to the status of the violation that's still in question. So I would like a motion to end the public portion of the meeting and enter into executive session.
I'm moved.
Okay, so Mark and Rebecca, thank you. Oh, uh, don't stop it yet, I'm sorry, before, before you stop. So if we can go back to the public session, so if we can undo the motion, I forgot, um, there are no changes to the, uh. Budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, um, it has remained the same, so, uh, I would like to put it to, have a motion. To approve the proposed twenty-two, twenty-three budget for the village's speculator. May I have a motion?
Mark.
Mark, second. Rebecca, um, any comments or questions? Nope, all in favor say aye to approve the budget?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no?
Aye.
Motion carries, okay.
I say aye.
Aye. Alright, and I say goodnight. Thank you.
Doctor Heim used to be one of our customers when I worked in Oregon, when he delivered babies for humans.
Uh, right.
And he said, four years I've done in business, I've never lost a father.
So thank you, I will tell my nephew that. Thank you, thank you, shorty, you have a good night. Yes, now you're stopping.
Recording stopped.
Yeah, and we're talking. Yes. Right, so if you would document going into executive session at seven fifty-three. Mark? Second by Rebecca.